Ladies and gentlemen, we have no members of the public, therefore no questions, so we'll go straight into the agenda. You will see behind me the instructions in case of fire. If you can't read them, don't worry, just follow Michael and myself, because we'll be out of here fairly quickly. Item one, minutes of the previous meeting, been laid on the table, do we have any problems? Or can I sign them?
Please.
Thank you very much indeed. Apologies for absence and substitutes, Fiona.
Thank you, Chairman. I've had apologies from councillors Christian Hesse, Chris Storey, Ross Welland and Liz Wheatley and Alan Binfield from the tenants' panel, and we have no substitutes this evening.
Thank you very much indeed. Declarations of interest, do we have any?
None, Chairman.
Are there any declarations of interest from the floor? No, thank you very much indeed. Questions by members of the public, Fiona?
None received, Chairman.
Thank you. We're now on page nine, which is the committee work programme for 2015-16. I'm assuming that you've all read your agenda, so I'm not going to go through it item by item. If you have anything you wish to raise on the work programme, please do so. If there is anything you wish to add, please let Fiona know. Any queries? Yes, councillor.
Two printing errors. 2015, twice at the bottom, should be 2016, simple. All right?
Sorry, I can't actually hear you. What page are we on?
Page nine.
Oh, great, okay, that's fine. Should be 2016, you're absolutely right. You've spotted our deliberate mistake. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, councillor.
The local authority trading company report, which I'm very keen to progress. Can we as councillors contribute, or in words of speaking, to officers who are preparing this report?
Thank you. Yes, Glenn.
Chairman, yes, that's fine. What's proposed for the November meeting is the background scoping report, and yeah, we'll welcome input from members into that, but then clearly we'll present something to the committee for members to comment on as well. But no, happy to take any input from members. But a report will be with the agenda papers for November, which will set out the scoping report.
Thank you. Are you happy with that, that you can make contact?
Thank you. Can I contact?
Yes, please do. Thank you. Anybody else? Then in which case is that noted?
Not noted.
Thank you very much. Item six, review of the overview and scrutiny committee terms of reference scoping report. You will recall that we did say that we would actually have a look at the terms of reference of each overview and scrutiny, because it may well be the time has come when we've got to look at moving some of the items from one committee to another. The executive have approved that we should have a joint committee to do this, and the proposal is that it comprises six members, chairman or vice-chairman of either committee, plus four members. Is that all right? Mr Ishwood, I was wondering, with your vast experience, you would like to be on that. I know you're there. I can see you, you're in the front row.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is that a yes?
Indeed.
Thank you.
I'd do anything to help the ladies.
Oh, dear me, it's going to be that sort of meeting. Okay. Right, anybody else wishing to be on it? Otherwise, I will propose someone. Right, councillor Wheatley, who's not here tonight. Well, Chris Storey, being deputy mayor, I felt probably had more on his plate than enough, but I thought that having given up being mayor, Liz Wheatley might like the challenge. So are we happy with that? So it's chairman or vice-chairman of each of the committees, plus the ones we've just named. No, two from here, two from the community. Okay, you're happy with that? Thank you very much indeed. Performance management report, quarter one, 2015-16, April to June, Lara, Lara Mackenzie.
Thank you, Chairman. Members will notice that the format of the performance report has changed as a result of a review undertaken. Information is now displayed graphically with comparative trends and later benchmarks where possible. I'd like to thank the chair and vice-chair directors and all the heads of service for their support with this change in the format of the performance reporting, and we are happy to take any comments.
Thank you very much indeed. It is a great improvement on what we had before, and much more understandable, so thank you very much, Lara. Any comments on the figures we have before us? If I take page 26, with all the graphs we have there? Yes, councillor.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The graph H3. It...
Could you put your microphone closer?
I beg your pardon, sorry. Yes, graph H3, it's a useful metric in terms of what the council's doing, but surely the key metric in terms of preventing homelessness is the cases that we've failed with rather than what we've achieved, and that's not actually shown here. I wonder if there's... I think it's really useful to show how much work has been done, which is what this is showing, but it's not telling us who's left homeless, if you like.
Lara, do you have an answer to that question?
We have an expert here.
Oh, Mike.
Yeah, thank you for that question. Yeah, I'm Mike Rivers, the housing needs manager, so I oversee part of the homelessness team. The report, what that is capturing is the homeless preventions that meet a certain government criteria, and it's quite a stringent criteria. So, for example, I think we had around about 800 housing advice inquiries to the housing options team last year. So in terms of the preventions, obviously it's a lower number, but you're not... that doesn't mean that the other people left disappointed, it means that we gave housing advice, maybe there wasn't an imminent threat of homelessness, so we give housing advice generally in regard to those inquiries. So the government definition is to do with where you've prevented homelessness and you're almost 90% sure that prevention will last at least six months, that is the sort of definition. And that captures not only the work of the housing options team, which is the team that I oversee, but also work from the CAB, from our rent service as well. So it doesn't mean that there's loads of people... if that was the case, there would be many, many rough sleepers on the streets of Waverley. Thankfully, they're not, but for those that are affected by that, obviously, we're very concerned. So there are a handful of people that maybe we don't even have a statutory duty to provide a roof over the head, but we still have a duty to provide them housing advice and signpost them to where there is help available. I don't know if...
If I could just add, a proxy measure for not being able to deal effectively for the demand for housing, particularly people who present themselves as homeless, is often the number of people that end up living in temporary accommodation. Now, across Surrey, the Surrey authorities, it is a growing problem, with some councils having hundreds of people in temporary accommodation. I think through the work of Mike's team, because they are so... they look at all the options and they make sure that all possibilities are being considered. At any one time over the last year, I think it probably reached less than 10, and right now, what the figure would be about now, Mike?
Certainly, at the moment, it's four or five households in temporary accommodation. In fact, I did a stat for another piece of work earlier today, and the average number across the Surrey authorities is 67 households in temporary accommodation. So that, as Damien says, does reflect how well we're doing, and also that not only helps the households, because we're helping them into a private rent, which is far more suitable than temporary accommodation, but it also has a financial benefit to Waverley, because temporary accommodation comes with a cost, and often that's initially emergency bed and breakfast, which has a big impact on costs on the general fund.
May I come back just quickly? I mean, the purpose of the question wasn't actually to try and run down what's being shown in any sense, it's actually that if you look at that particular graph, it looks like there's wild variation in what you're doing from quarter to quarter, and yet we do all know that you're being very, very successful. And I just wonder whether there's a metric out there that actually reflects the success better than this particular graph, which, you know, does fluctuate wildly.
I mean, I think why we're reporting numbers here, I think previously we did it per thousand population, which didn't seem to... we didn't seem to feel captures the true position, but we could possibly include that as well, if that gives another indication, because again, that was a previous government stat, so we could have the numbers as well as how that pans out in terms of per thousand population, household population in Waverley. I could certainly report that, no?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Two questions, really, on the same measurement. Could you explain why last year there was the curve going up in Q2 and Q3 and down in Q4? Is that a seasonal thing, and can we expect the same thing again this year, or with special circumstances? And the second question was, are there any asylum seekers at the moment amongst your clients who are perhaps in temporary accommodation or running into consideration here? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take the latter one first. In terms of asylum seekers, there are separate arrangements that the government have for someone seeking asylum, and so accommodation is arranged elsewhere in the country, and it's only after someone is granted refugee status that they are eligible to actually have recourse to public funds and the help available under the homeless legislation. In terms of the numbers, what we tend to see in terms of our presentations, generally between January and March, we tend to get more people coming in, but that doesn't necessarily mean that we're able to... you know, our ability to prevent homelessness is very much fluctuates by how much supported accommodation is available, how much private rented accommodation is available, the financial circumstances of each household. So it will inevitably fluctuate. So it is hard to predict. We used to think that sometimes in the summer months, we wouldn't get so many people, but certainly going back a few years, we had lots of presentations over the summer months. So it is peaks and troughs, I'm afraid, because there's so many variables that can affect it.
Yes, certainly, councillor.
Asylum seekers, how many refugees have been accommodated would be the next question, I would...
No, we don't have any refugees in our temporary accommodation, and certainly, obviously referring to the latest thing in the headlines, some councils, I understand, have sort of volunteered, if you like, to assist with the refugee crisis. I'm not aware that the government has applied any legislation in terms of requiring all councils to assist. You may remember a few years ago, with the Monserrat volcano, legislation actually came out, giving all councils a responsibility to assist under the homeless legislation for anyone approaching because of that disaster, but certainly I'm not aware of any legislation at the moment coming out, but we would obviously keep members informed if that position changes and there is legislation that could impact on Waverley.
That would be helpful. Is that all right, councillor? Thank you. Councillor Henry?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm on page 26, housing number two. Have we got any further comments regarding the data for relet performances? Thank you.
Yes, we have, and perhaps we can provide that after the meeting, we haven't got that with me, that data.
Is that all right, councillor? We'll make sure you get it after the meeting.
Do apologize, I mean, because we did provide it to the improvement subcommittee, it hasn't just reached this report, I'm afraid.
Could I ask, Hugh, that you give it to Fiona, and she circulates it to all members, because you've all been party to the question?
Because if you recall, we produced a small report, which probably we could circulate. Apologies.
Thank you. Councillor Fraser, have I missed you? Did you indicate...
No.
Oh, right, okay, thank you. Anybody else? Right, shall we move on? Page 27? 29? Councillor Goodrich?
Clearly, on the top two on that page, we're into red, which begs the question as to why we had a large amount of work outstanding before the quarter. Presumably, it means that it wasn't a very good quarter before. I mean, was there a great upsurge at a particular time that caused this?
Thank you, Councillor Goodrich. The cause of the upsurge is that we did what we call data matching now, from information from DWP and HMRC on people's earnings and financial circumstances, and we're obliged to turn that information around and compare it to the information that we hold, and that information comes in daily, it's daily feeds into our systems here that we have to deal with, and the team in the benefits section are the people that actually deal with that data. So there's a significant increase in the workload from that. It's a pilot project, it's been going on for a few months now, and we've geared up recently by taking on a full-time temporary role for a year to assist us in dealing with that increase in volume. So we should see a marked improvement again.
What about joiners? There's a picture of levers. Are there any joiners? HR1 shows staff turnover in terms of the number of joiners... sorry, yes, the number of joiners... sorry, the number of levers. I just wondered whether there was lots of joiners.
Chairman, can I answer that? There are lots of joiners. They're not shown in this graph, because it's a performance about levers, but if it's something that members are interested in seeing in future, we clearly have those figures that we can bring into the performance report, so that members can look at the tooth.
Chairman, and chairman, if somebody leaves, and as a council, we don't bring a report to full council to delete the post, generally, we will want to recruit to it, and so in an ideal world, the number of levers equals number of starters, it's just there's a time lag. And so probably the effect on the graph may be to double the numbers on the graph, but actually the shape of the graph would be the same, just that little time lag of maybe a few months between someone leaving and their replacement arriving.
I think so.
No, Chairman, thank you. Any more questions from people? Mr Martin?
Sorry, Chairman, I wonder if we could just go back to page 29 with your forbearance. One of the concerns we had a year or two ago was that the new housing benefit and credits system from the government was going to make life difficult for us in terms of council tax collection and things of that sort. We appear to have done very well, and I think that's reflected across the counties, not just Waverley. I think most councils have done a lot better than they thought. I just wonder whether there's any comments about where you think we might go, whether that will be sustained, and whether we can be fairly optimistic now, or less pessimistic than we were when we first started.
Mr Clark?
Chairman, yes, thank you, and it's a really good point. It's something that this committee had their eye on as we came to the transition from council tax benefit to locally set council tax support. What we've done successfully is worked with those households who came through that transition and lost out, because members put into the budget a transitional hardship fund, and we enabled those households to apply for that money to help get them through that transition. And in fact, when we look at the latest set of figures for the number of households in receipt of council tax support, it has come down over the last three years, which is what the council wanted to achieve through its council tax support scheme, because there are incentives to work built into that scheme, and they have come through. And in fact, the number of, and the value of, applications for hardship relief has also reduced. So what the council's policy was three years ago, when it set its local scheme, was to incentivize work, bring people off of that form of support, and also to get people through that transition with, you know, support for that hardship period, and to say that's been successful. And alongside that, we've continued our robust approach to council tax, which is to be firm but fair, and we've managed to maintain our collection rates. And as you say, councillors, there's good examples, again, in other authorities across Surrey, which is good for all council taxpayers, because it means that we can project high rates of collection with certainty when we set our budgets and our council tax.
Councillor, can we move on? Is that all right, your answer? Thank you. If we could move on to item eight, treasury management activity. Peter?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So this is a regular update that we bring along to just show where we're at with the overall position with treasury management. The report's the standard report, it covers the balance of the investments, just the value of the investments we have in the market, on average, a weekly average. So also benchmarks, performance against the base rate. We look at maturity profile of the amount of money out on the market, against the... also against the risk profile that we have set within the treasury management strategy. So it's fairly straightforward and self-explanatory as a report. The key thing to take from the report is that performance is within the strategy, and the budget's... it's on budget for the interest earned that's required, so all's well at the moment, and expects to carry on to be so.
Thank you very much indeed, Peter. Any questions on treasury activity? Yes, Councillor Hebron?
Thank you, Chairman. I raised this question at the last meeting we had, it was really about demonstrating the amounts of money that have to... are available for investment, how they're tied up and when they're needed, and it's still not clear from the graphs that are presented, how much of the funds that are needed to be invested are genuine long-term reserves, how much are sort of midterm funds required for projects in the three to six month period, for instance, and how much is absolute working capital. So I suspect the officers are doing a genuinely good job, I just struggle to relate the amount of funds that they have and the need for them to the performance, because without that information, the graphs aren't actually linked to the performance.
Peter?
Thank you, Councillor Hebron. We're working with the treasury team at the moment within the finance section to look at how we can present that information for you in terms of the graph. And also, we'll have more detail of that at the finance seminar that we're having in October, so we'll be able to display there how that relates to our reserves overall. So it's a work in progress, we haven't forgotten about it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councillor Hebron, if you're really interested in this, perhaps you could make arrangements to actually go into the office and go through this with Peter? Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you. Then in which case, we'll note the recommendation that the committee notes the investment activity and performance in 15-16. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much indeed. We move on to housing, item nine, minutes of the meeting of the housing improvement subcommittee on the 16th of September 2015. Now, you should have received these minutes by email. If not, there is a copy, a set, over on the table for you to have a look at. So I'll give you a few minutes just to look at them, if you haven't already done so. Now, we're meant to be receiving the minutes, there's no actions to be taken as a result of them, but I do wonder, Adrian, would you like to comment? Because we had MERS in again, and it's quite a long minute there, and I wondered, as a member of the tenants' panel, or chairman of the tenants' panel, you wish to comment on MERS being at that meeting?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, there was three representatives from MERS, there was the managing director, the contracts manager, and the area manager, so it's quite high-profile people there. And we discussed sort of their sort of service, the way they deliver their service, getting jobs done right first time, and sort of communication issues that they possibly may have, and I think the meeting went quite well. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. One of the things that we did note was that, if you remember, this all started because there was a fair degree of money outstanding, in the sense that MERS had not invoiced us. Now, whilst I really don't care if they don't collect their money, I do care from the point of view of the accounts here and provisions we have to put in our accounts, I'm told that that figure has come down quite significantly to something like £50,000, which we all need to be very pleased about. However, that reduction is as a result of a huge amount of work put into doing this by our officers, and the point was made very clear to MERS management that it is not our job, it is theirs. You know, it's time our officers went and did their day job, and not trying to help MERS out. So I think it was put quite forcibly, and I think they did understand that we weren't going to continue this. But I thought it was a very positive meeting, and I hope you agree with that, Adrian.
Yes, I do, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So you've got the minutes before you. Has anybody got any queries? Yes, Councillor Walton?
In the report, the section business intelligence, this is item 72, there's a suggestion or a statement that MERS receive a bonus. What is that for?
That is part of their contract.
Is it significant?
The payment to MERS comes in is quite complex, and part of it is a payment related to how they perform in terms of KPIs. It's not significant in terms of the amount that we pay them for all the work streams, you know, we're spending about £10 million with them, and if I remember correctly, the money that we pay is about £20,000 per annum, that's the principal of it. And what the problem is, we focus on that sometimes, rather than the bigger picture, and that's something that we... for one reason, we want to remove that, it's because we focus on the wrong things.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Hopefully, members will see this as a positive report, despite the nature of the recommendations. It's positive because it's a response to a very challenging set of circumstances. Support in our shelter schemes is provided by... currently, the structure is we have a scheme manager and an assistant scheme manager, and the funding for that support is provided by... And the funding for that support is provided by Supporting People Grant, which is administered by Surrey County Council. There's a lot of pressure on that grant across the country, and we've negotiated strongly with Surrey to try and reduce the impact and keep as much of the grant as possible. But there has to be a reduction in the funding by Surrey. It's something that they can't help. So, we've reviewed the service, and thought of how we can provide the service. And we've also looked at the different needs, not only within the shelter scheme, but within the wider community. So, rather than put up the fees to our tenants, we've looked to actually reduce the amount of staff in the schemes. Because, as I mentioned, we have a scheme manager and assistant in each scheme, and what we're proposing is actually to delete the assistant scheme managers and create one full-time post to cover the two extra care schemes in Farnham. So, that's really a net deletion of seven posts. But the key point is that each scheme will still have a full-time scheme manager. And I think in this day and age, that is still unusual. Most schemes have a floating support scheme manager, who a scheme manager could cover three or four schemes. So, that is really a positive thing that we still manage to achieve. In terms of this review of the service, we've consulted staff and tenants. Staff have been very positive. The scheme managers understand that they have wider duties, especially in terms of bugging and covering annual leave of their colleagues. We went out to, I went and met every tenant's group within the schemes. Again, there were some concerns, but I felt I was able to respond to those concerns. And I think, in the end, the most residents understood why we needed to do that. The other positive thing, we could see the reduction in funding coming ahead, and to ease the impact, we haven't been recruiting to the assistant scheme manager's post. So, many schemes have only, have been running for a number of months on just a scheme manager. Therefore, only two staff are affected in terms of being at risk of redundancy. And of course, we will do all we can to ensure they are not made redundant, and there is going to be one post that at least one of them should be able to be allocated to. So, to conclude, despite financial pressures, we're still going to have a full-time scheme manager in each scheme. The extra care scheme in, the two extra, sorry, the two extra care schemes in Farnham will have, still have an assistant to be shared between them. We will still be able to provide our supporting service to the wider community. And as I said, we've managed to manage it that only two people will face the risk of redundancy. So, any questions?
I'm sorry, Peter. If you want to discuss that in detail, the redundancies, we will have to go into confidential, because it is a confidential matter. However, we can discuss the item generally. Any comments about this? I know staff have been consulted thoroughly on this one. And the tenants. Yes, Councillor Hebron?
Thank you, Chairman. A quick point of clarification relating to the table on page 47. Since, obviously, the costs of administering these schemes drive the decisions, I'm just interested to know what has caused the cost to go up in the second column of the table by nine percent between last year and this year? There may be some works that have been done that I'm not aware of, but... Page 47, the table at the bottom.
The table at the bottom.
Second column, between 2014 and 15, and 1516, there's an increase in the total cost of the service, which is an increase of nine percent, which, given current inflation and low staff cost increases year to year.
Hugh, I'm sorry, could you use your microphone?
Apologies.
No, no problem.
So, the 1415 would be the outcome figure, and not the budget figure. And so, therefore, the 1516 would be our budget figure. So, that would explain the difference, the large difference, because we would have had, as I mentioned, we were running a number of vacancies for a number of months in that previous year.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Then, in which case, I'll put the recommendations. The proposed staffing changes, is that agreed? The current eight part-time assistant manager post be deleted, is that agreed? Okay. A new full-time assistant manager post be created, is that agreed? The potential redundancy cost shown in the exempt annex, is that agreed? Okay. The floating support service continues until May 2017, is that agreed? March, sorry, March 2016, is that agreed? Thank you. We now move on to item 11, and this is Damian Roberts taking this item.
Thank you, Chairman. This is a grant that we provide to people living in private sector accommodation to support primarily then with making adjustments to their accommodation to accommodate a disability or a growing level of frailty. This is something that we do, that's part-funded from external funding and part-funded from council funding. And as you can imagine, whenever you're accessing external funding, it's really important, if you hope to retain it, to demonstrate that it's adding value, in particular, that the people who are benefiting from it are seeing that benefit and value that service. Up until this point, we've sought customer feedback, but actually, as is often the case, you send out a form, and they don't come back. And so, this time round, what we've done is a telephone survey of all those who've received the service, so we can actually get a better representation of views. These are often people in quite desperate circumstances, on relatively low income, who have high needs that require work done. And what this report says is actually, the vast majority of the people who use this service value it highly, and feel that it makes a real and tangible difference to the quality of their lives. Now, we are really pleased about that, but also slightly surprised, because for many of the people who access this grant, they have to wait a long time before the work is completed. Because often, as is the case in these circumstances, somebody with the right technical or professional background needs to go out and assess the person's needs, and identify exactly the right solution for them. And that requires an occupational therapist to do that work, and there's a shortage of occupational therapists. And so often, the lead time for getting an occupational therapist to go out, make the assessment, means that many months are added to the timeframe. But actually, what this shows is, despite the length of time that people have to wait, at the end of the day, when those improvements are made, they are very satisfied with the outcome. And that's very helpful for us to know, because we will be using that information when we talk to our partner colleagues in health and social care, when we try and justify retention of this funding for the foreseeable future. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. We get our physiotherapists from a pool, do we not, Mr. Roberts, which is administered by Surrey County Council?
Yes, they're occupational therapists, yes.
Okay. Any comments by anybody? Ben?
Just saying, it seems a very good news report, a very high percentage of satisfaction.
Despite the length of the wait, so that's very good news. In which case, I will put the recommendation at item 11, that corporate overview and scrutiny committee notes the results of the customer satisfaction survey for grant applications. Is that agreed? Thank you. Item 12, update on Waverley's housing allocation scheme. Mr. Rivers?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This is a report giving an update on how well our allocation scheme is running. In January 2013, we took the opportunity provided to us by the Localism Act to actually restrict access to Waverley's housing register. Before this date, anyone really had a right to go on the local council's housing register. And that inevitably meant our housing register was far larger, and we were having people on our register with no local connection to Waverley, and also with no discernible housing need. But people had this right, and we were managing a housing register with these extra households on it. With the Localism Act, we had the opportunity to actually zoom in on those in most need, and those with a local connection to Waverley. And so, we took that opportunity. And at the same time, we also took the opportunity to have a more robust verification process, so that if, for example, people owed debts to Waverley, that could preclude them from being on our housing register, and we would require them to have a separate repayment plan. And similarly, before an offer of accommodation, we have far more stringent requirements before we actually offer them accommodation. So, the allocation scheme has worked very well. The table on page 64 shows the reduction in number of households on the housing register. And the housing register and the allocation scheme have also maintained and complemented our homelessness prevention work. And in paragraph 12 on page 64, we highlight that the allocation scheme works in part, alongside our homeless prevention work, so people aren't penalised for moving into a private rented tenancy. We don't penalise them by, say, because you're adequately housed, we'll remove you from the housing register. So, the two work very well. So, really, it's just to give an update, and I'm open to answer any questions. Thank you.
Could I ask a question, Mr. Rivers? And that is that if people keep bidding under the allocation scheme, and they bid for their property, how often can they bid and keep turning down properties? So, if a property is offered to them, how often can they do that? Because that precludes other people from getting homes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The first thing is, each week, any applicant can bid for, if there are three properties that are of the right size for them, they can place three bids. Obviously, lots of people will bid for a property, and they're nowhere near the top of the bidding list. So, it hones it down. What happens is, each week, we have a shortlist, and the computer system will highlight who is the top bid each week. What our officers will then do is phone up the applicant and say, are they, you know, they placed, they are the top bid, are they still interested in that property? And what we're trying to get from people is that they're serious, because what we don't want to do is arrange a viewing, which takes an officer's time and also the applicant's time, if they've got no particular interest in a property. And this, if you like, contrasts to how we used to run the system, because in, if you like, the bad old days, when we allocated housing, we, an applicant would get a letter out of the blue saying, you have been awarded this property in this particular area. It came out of the blue, and then we then waited for them to reply to that letter. So, we've got a far more streamlined version. Our allocation scheme does allow us, if people persistently bid and then turn down properties for what are considered to be no good reason, we are able to suspend them from the housing register. So, we do have that ability. And we also are very sort of strict, if you like. We require applicants to maintain their contact numbers, because again, sometimes we can phone people up to say they've placed a bid, and if the number doesn't work, then, you know, we might have an email, we might email them, and if that comes back. So, what we'll then do is we'll suspend their application, and we'll move on to the next person. And it's amazing how good that system is, because once you suspend someone, it means when they go in the next week to bid for a property, they can't bid. First thing they'll do is phone us up, why can't I bid? And we'll say, well, actually, we contacted you last week on this contact number, that contact number, this email. We didn't get a response, and so we've moved on. Yes, we can open up your application, but you need to update us with your details. We have an annual review similarly, where if people don't reply to that, we will suspend them. And if we still don't get a reply, we will cancel their application. So, there are quite a few measures in place, but we're always looking at ways of trying to maximise the time that we can let a property in, so that we're not wasting officers' time, but also not wasting customers' time. I hope that helps explain that.
Thank you very much indeed. That was very useful, that explanation. Anybody got any queries, questions on this report? No? Then, in which case, I'll put the recommendation that the committee notes the contents of this report and agrees any comments it wishes to pass on to the executive. But we have no comments. Is that agreed? Thank you very much indeed. Mr. Allen, you come into your own here.
Thank you, Chair.
Strategic Asset Plan for General Fund Property. Now, we have quite a large report, which is in pink, which means it's in confidential. If we want to go into that report in detail, I will have to go into confidential for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So, indeed, we're focusing here on the corporate property portfolio, which is detailed and set out in those exempt papers, where we have a small team that manage that portfolio, and early member involvement by the Asset Advisory Group. But what we don't have is a strategy that kind of defines the priorities and objectives, and that's what this report is designed to address. We did, since the papers were issued, we have had some questions from councillor Bolton, which we've provided a written response to, so hopefully he's satisfied with that. Other than that, I'm happy to take any questions on the purpose of the strategy.
I'll ask you, were you happy with your responses?
Yes, I was.
Thank you. Councillor Martin?
I have a couple of questions, which may need to be answered in exempt session, so I don't know whether we could go into exempt session.
If it's your wish, I'll go into exempt now. It is the last general item on the agenda. Is that the committee's wish? Then, in which case, I will go to item 14, exclusion of, and any issue to be considered. At that point, I declare the meeting closed. Thank you.